Oh, Dr. Hi.
All right, let's give this just a second to connect. Like magic. All right. Thank you, Board and our other guests in the room. Good to see everybody. So as we are required by Indiana law now, once a collective or excuse me, a tentative agreement is reached between the Board and the local teacher association, which here in Noblesville, we call that the teachers forum. We are required to hold what's called the teacher contract tentative agreement meeting, which is what we're going to do here for the next few minutes, which is essentially a chance for me to show, share with the board and the community, the, um, the terms of the agreement that we have reached. So one little caveat to everything I'm going to share, I'm only going to focus on things that have changed. So if I don't talk about it, you can assume that everything else in the contract didn't change. But just for the interest of time and for clarity's sake, um, I'm only going to focus on those things that change. So I always like to start with a quick explanation of how we do bargaining here because it's a little different than some districts do it. Here at Noblesville, um, for the last, gosh, I think decade now or so, they followed something called interest-based bargaining. And so the process itself is, is used to ensure that we develop shared interests that are, that are important to everyone in the process. And, and we are very clear about those on the front end. And then we have a very diverse group of teachers, administrators, and representative from the school board are all part of the team that, that sits down to bargain this contract over three days. So, um, if you'd like to see who participated this year, these are the two teams. So if you look there on the left, I listed all the forum members that were there. And then in addition to the teachers on that list, you also see Becky Slaton at the bottom. She, um, works for the Indiana State Teachers Association. She's what's called the UNISERV Director. So she basically represents, um, a group of districts in a certain region of the state. So she is our UNISERV Director and we are very fortunate to have a great working relationship with Becky. She's, she's very, um, uh, good to work with from our side. And then on our side, um, you'll see the list of folks that are there typically Dr. Rich is a part of this, but he had a, uh, conflict that came up due to a whole bunch of different circumstances. So he wasn't able to, to participate this year, but one notable change from prior years, um, this year I asked two principals to join the team also. That had not been the case in years past, and I'll be honest, two years ago, when I did this for the first time, it felt kind of weird to me that they weren't already in there. Because they have a lot of perspective on some of these topics that we don't have. And so I, I think that was proven true through the process for those who participated. They were able to really speak to some things where the rest of us would not have been able to do so. Really, really great. Um, we had Dr. Mobley and Tanya Moody from Promis Road there. And then Christie, of course, was your representative. That, that's always been the role of the school board president to sit on the bargaining team as on the voice of the board. And then finally, um, Amy Matthews, who's one of our school district attorneys through CCH, she is the one that for again, I think probably close to a decade now has been the, the attorney assigned to Noblesville for the bargaining process. But I always think it's really important to say this next after that, even though yes, technically I just showed you two teams. The mindset and approach that everyone takes through this process is truly that we are all one team with the same goal and we want the same things at the end. We are all on town team Noblesville, right? And so that's even though, um, I showed you there are two different groups, we still come from our perspectives and work together to come up with something that everyone feels, feels good about at the end. So through the process, um, the shared goal between all of us, we talked about this on the very first day is at the end, the final product has to meet these three requirements. It has to be feasible. Meaning, you know, it has to be something that we can actually afford or that will be, will be able to, you know, implement appropriately. It needs to be sustainable. So an example would be, we can't agree to some, you know, $10,000 raise if we know in the next year, we couldn't afford to keep having that $10,000 raise. So it has to be something that we believe we can sustain long-term. And then at the end of the day, it has to be ratifiable and that goes, that goes two ways. One, obviously the board, you know, a job for, for me and Christie is to make sure that we feel that the things that we're agreeing to are things that we believe the entire board will support when we, when we bring it forward. But on the flip side, the teachers have the same responsibility to all of their members. They need to make sure that they are agreeing to things that they think their membership will, will support. And we'll talk a little bit about that part at the very end, um, of this today. So, um, so at the very, on the very first day, we kind of spent an hour or so talking about what are our interests right now as we, as we looked ahead to what we're going to do over the next three days. And we had a long list of interests and we kind of went through a process to kind of whittle them down and group them. And these were the seven that kind of seemed like the big bucket items that everything else kind of fell under. So you'll see there, we talked about protecting or enhancing benefits for teachers, obviously attracting and retaining quality teachers, providing a path for future growth, elevating the education profession, honoring the, the work-life balance for our staff, honoring education and experience. And of course, and probably most importantly, and I would say the six above this, I'll feed to the last one, which is providing positive student experiences for all of our kids. So here we go. Let's talk about the changes in the agreement. I tried to group these by, um, big topics to kind of keep similar things together to make it a little easier to track. So let's talk about leaves first. You may remember Board, two years ago, we did a, um, a partial shift over to a paid time off model, a PTO model. With some, some things we left in place to kind of navigate this in that first, that first year trial. Most of those things went well, but we definitely learned some lessons. And so we, we felt ready and comfortable, um, making a full shift to a true paid time off model now. So all leave days will now convert to a PTO model. With some, with some appropriate guardrails and the primary, the primary one is the second bullet here. That if a staff member is wishing to use more than five consecutive PTO days that are not illness-related, they do need to get approval from either me or Desi knee, that would likely be Dr. Hendrick, um, at least two weeks in advance. And then we, we did add a cap, add a caveat that obviously if there's some extenuating circumstance, they should absolutely reach out to me and we'll, we'll work together to see if we can, if we can work that out. We, this is something we haven't really had in practice for a while anyway, but so we want to take it out of the contract. We took away the two for one penalty of PTO days before, after a break. This really hasn't been an issue. Um, in fact, trying to enforce it was the issue and it led to unintended consequences. So we all agree that, that was something we wanted to take out. Anyone now who has remaining PTO days, um, over 184 at the end of a contract year, automatically those extra days will just roll into our sick leave bank, which is where we bank up extra days for people who need them in extreme circumstances. And then, um, we also are removing the work experience language that, that currently exists in the contract that is an allowable sabbatical leave. So let me, let me give you a little context on that for a minute. So most districts have a sabbatical leave section in their contract, which essentially says that if a teacher wants to go off and do some sort of an experience, they can take a break from employment for maybe six months, a year to go do that. Typically those are thought of as, um, you know, maybe like a professional growth kind of thing, but it's bigger than just a few days or some experience would maybe enhance their work as a teacher, and then they would come back to the district. Noblesville for a while has had this extra claw or little line in there that says work experience. And what has unfortunately happened sometimes is people will leave, they will go do another actual job and then they may or may not come back. That's a very weird feeling concept, even if I'm saying it out loud, that we can go test drive a job and then still have a safe job. And so we all were in agreement that this really doesn't make any sense. And honestly, most of the time when that happens, the people don't come back anyway. So now we've held a job for someone who wasn't sick and around. So we all felt comfortable that it was time to take that out. But the rest of sabbatical leave definitely has a, a true good place in, in our culture and we want to keep the rest there. A few more leaving, a lot of leaving things this time around. Went on a leave for a reason that qualifies for FMLA. We've always had that, you know, you need to use your PTO days, but we talked, we talked through some very specific scenarios where it might be appropriate for a teacher to be able to save a few. So this way this ensures that if they're out for a long-term FMLA reason, they can still hold back up to three PTO days if they want to. You know, just to have for when they return to work, if there was something. So a good example that we talked about a lot might be, you know, if someone has had a baby and they're going to be out for a long time, they may want to keep a few days because when they get back, there may be some follow-up appointments or things. So that was very reasonable. We all, we all felt very good about that. Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yes. Yep. Yep. Thank you. Yep. Great clarification on that. But recently we, we added, I don't know, sometime in the past that a close friend was a brief leave reason, just for clarity's sake, because of a few questions that have come up over the years. We are adding some language that clarifies that the close friend must be the person who's actually deceased. That seems like a very morbid thing to say, but, um, we need to be very, we want to be very clear that that is who we're, we're talking about in those, in those situations. We also clarified again, this was already happening, but we felt it was good to make sure it was clear in the, in the contract that association days. So in our contract, we allow, um, a certain number of association days where they can do forum things without it counting against their personal leave days. And we, we wanted to make sure it was clear and no question that bargaining does not count against those days. That's a separate, that's a whole separate thing. So just making sure that was clear. We also clarified that if someone has been out for a long leave at the start of a school year, so prior to the year starting, that they will not receive their annual allotment of days until they actually return to work. And let me give you an example of why this is important. If someone, let's say they've worked for us for 10 years, they, they are off on an extended leave over the summer and they don't come back. And then they get their allotment of PTO days for that year. And then they start using those days and then they choose not to come back. They have been given days tied to a contract that they never actually started. So we all felt very, this felt like a very common sense thing that probably should have been done before. So we're just clarifying that you won't get that next allotment until you've actually returned to work and started a new contract and then you would get your days. And then this last one is all new and there was quite a few different examples. We talked about this. We added, we're going to add a little section in here that gives me the ability to grant discretionary leave for a situation that rises within the scope of a teacher's employment. So an example might be, let's say, um, unexpectedly a, a staff member gets hurt at work and, and I feel they need to, they need to go home. I have the ability to give them a day to go home without them having to use a day or whatnot. But you'll notice we made sure it's very clear that it's within the scope of their employment. It's something related to their job that happened that day. It's not just they're upset about something at home or whatever. That's a, that's a PTO situation. But it gives me that, that flexibility because again, every once in a while, we will have a unique situation come up and wanting to be very clear that yes, it's okay if, if we do that. But that, those are obviously extreme, um, exception type situations because they, they would come through me. So benefits, um, we clarified that again, this is something that's already happening. We were just cleaning up the language a little bit. We wanted to clarify that Noblesville Schools as a district will pay the mandatory TRF, that's Teacher Retirement Fund contributions. Right now it's, it specifies a certain percentage. We just wanted to, um, remove that and just clarify it out that we will always cover that, what that is, even if the percentage were to go up by the state, we don't anticipate that happening. But just to clarify, we, we feel that's, that's something that we want to do as a district, that we pay that on our teachers behalf. We are also making a shift to how we calculate how much the district will pay towards health insurance, um, the health insurance premiums, which is what that second one means. I probably could have written that a little better. And, and without getting too deep into the weeds, the basic, the basics are that in the past, we were calculating the percentage share that we would pay based on one type of plan. Through the work of the benefits committee and David's expertise, felt that it would actually make sense to align it to the basic premium pricing. This actually is a slight increase of benefit to teachers, but it also makes for more, um, more consistent and fair, um, way to distribute it in the future. I don't know if you have anything else to say to that.
That's really well said.
That's out of my area, but.
Yeah, it was really said to help our plan get aligned for future planning. It was not really aligned to industry standard, so we made that happen, uh, within this contract. So then when we have any future insurance plan design changes, we can do that fortunately within our plan.
Yep. The next one is again, it's really just aligning to what we're already doing. I think our contract at the moment says there'd be like up to six retirement vendors or something, but we actually don't have that. We really just have one. And our teachers felt like for clarity's sake, we should really bring that down to just match what we actually are doing. So we're, we're going to clean that up, um, to match the number of retirement vendors we now offer. We wanted to memorialize and just note in the contract more to make teachers aware of it, um, that we do provide a 10% discount to our staff for Miller Explorers and Little Millers. That's not new. We've always done that, but thought it would be good to have it here so teachers could see it and be aware of it. Long-term leave coverage is compensated at the teacher hourly rate. This is again, something that's already happening, but we felt we needed to get it in the contract because we haven't had it clear so people understand. So what this means, just so you understand what we're talking about here, let's say, um, we have a teacher unexpectedly leave, like truly leave, like they're not coming back, um, in the middle of, of a semester. And we can't get a qualified sub or it's a course, it's too difficult for a sub to carry. And we truly need some of our teachers to unfortunately take on additional real responsibilities like grading and lesson plan design, maybe even having to teach on their prep or something. The way we've always handled this the last few years is we pay those teachers their hourly rate because they are truly doing full-time work. But that wasn't clearly spelled out in the contract. So we wanted to get that clarified so that in the future, people know if this, if this happens, this is how you'll be compensated. And then, um, class coverage amounts, again, this is not really a, a major change. But because our sub rate has the, has the possibility of fluctuating and usually going up over time. We wanted to realign the amounts that teachers are paid if they, um, if they are filling in and through sub duties throughout the day. So you may know right now in the contract, if a teacher, let's again, make up an example, if they give up their prep and say, I'll cover that class because we don't have enough subs today. They, right now it's just a set dollar amount for what they get depending on the time. But the concern that we all had is well, as the sub rate goes up, it will suddenly feel like our teachers are getting compensated less than a sub for the same amount of time. So basically we just aligned it to a percentage so that if the sub rate goes up, it will just rise with it. It basically works out to be the same as what a sub is, is making, um, just in fairness to our teachers to make sure they're feeling like they're getting what they should. A few more benefits things. Noblesville Schools, um, it's going to cover the entire cost of the required background checks for existing employees. So Board, you may or may not know this, but every five years on a cycle, every employee has to go through the full background check process again. That's a requirement that changed a few years back. So all of us are on kind of rotation. When someone's newly hired, they have it done right then, but then they're put into the cycle. Why this, why this matters is most people have always been covered, but because of the way it works, there's a few situations where it would be over and above what the district normally covers to pay. And typically that's if someone has worked in multiple states because we have to run, um, some of the indexes on every state. And so the cost starts adding up. But the financial impact on this, David, David figured out it's a couple thousand dollars a year. It's not a significant amount and we just felt like it would be a good thing that we just cover that. Cause if it's a long time valued employee, we want to, we want to cover that for them. We wanted to clarify that extra duty compensation, that's already in the contract, but we want to clarify that that would also apply to, um, any district-led or created, um, big programs such as like the program review. So if you remember, we just finished up the, the CKLA, um, decision with, you know, literacy and language arts. That committee was a lot of time and a lot of work for our teachers and they were not compensated for that. And that really kind of put us, put us thinking about this this year that hmm, we really should probably find a way for something that's a big commitment like that, that it should turn into a compensation situation. Obviously every committee does, is not need to be compensated. If it's a couple hour volunteer, that's something different, but something like that was pretty significant. So that, that was something we wanted to, to work on. Our Viva contributions, which is kind of like, uh, health, health savings for, for retirement. We, we all agreed that we were going to discontinue that. And I'll tell you why in just a second. So those will end at the end of this calendar year. And then all of us who have Viva accounts, we will all be immediately vested and we'll be able to access those funds now instead of waiting for retirement. Why that, why that matters is it's no secret to anyone that health insurance costs continue to rise. And right now, just where the state of everything is financially, we all felt that it'd be a better use of those funds to be able to free them up and get them ready to, um, to put in somewhere else, namely salaries. And just a second, we're going to talk about. But the idea behind freeing up people's Viva accounts right now is if they wanted to, they can use their personal Viva accounts to start, um, you know, subsidizing their own health insurance premiums if they want. So some people may not want to do this. They may want to just leave that money for retirement, but if they have a, a balance and think, gosh, I think I will start, you know, starting to use that to cover some things right now, it can benefit them now. A big, a big theme that we talked about a lot last week was just the idea of trying to get more dollars in our employees' pockets right now with the rising costs of, of things. And obviously it's some of the tightness of the budget. So, um, so I just kind of just said that the funds currently allocated to Viva were then redirected into the salary increases we'll talk about in a second. And then new employees who were just hired, and if they're at the bottom of the scale, um, we are going to do a one-time lump sum into their Viva account. By the end of this calendar year to finish their full contribution. And the reason is because of how the salary, um, piece works on the next page. And we want to make sure that they got that full allotment. So there's only 11 people, I think, that are actually at that level. So that's not a large, a large number of people, but. So compensation, um, I wasn't sure where to put the one-year contract, so I stuck it on this page. But, uh, for the first time in a while, we, we all mutually agree that it was best for everyone to only agree to a one-year contract this year. And that's a little different. We normally do it too. Cause, um, as you may recall, in Indiana, we can have up to a two-year contract if you bargain it in the first year of the budget cycle. But we all felt, given all the things going on, that one year made, made the most sense. So that's what we decided on. We did make several ECA position adjustments. I didn't want to go through all those today, but if you look at the document I put on Board Doc three, there's a link that'll show you the full list of the ECAs. It's, it's not a lot easier just to look at. So you may remember that we are now required to have a, a, an additional base salary increase for people who've earned their literacy endorsement. So, um, after talking this through with Amy and Becky and, and sharing all of our thoughts, we settled on a $200 base salary increase felt most appropriate in Noblesville Schools. So anyone who has earned that endorsement, which is kind of overseen by the state of Indiana, um, they will receive a $200 base salary increase. This will be separate from the salary scale. It is a base salary increase, but it's not on the scale itself. It's kind of a separate thing. And then the notification period, what I mean by this bullet is we already have a, a process in place where, um, let's say I earned a master's degree. So I would get a raise for that. I have to let the district know by a certain date. I can't just, you know, take a random time to tell me, there's kind of a window where we'll make your adjustment, otherwise you need to wait till the next window. So we just aligned this with that same window that already exists. We didn't do anything new. We just said, we'll align this with the master's degree. Um, and then the salary schedule itself, if you look at the old, um, the old contract and, and what last year's salary, uh, schedule is, we kept the same salary schedule. So, um, the only change is the very last step got a $1,000 increase to make sure that our friends that are already at that scale will get some sort of a salary increase this year. Otherwise everyone who's eligible and is a returning teacher will move one step on the scale itself. And then those who were sitting at step 21 last year, so they're not moving a step, um, they will receive the new, the new amount plus to make it a little more, um, fair and balanced between what everyone else is getting. We also felt it was appropriate to give them a one-time contribution of an additional $1,000 into their Viva account, which again, really just makes it, um, much more in line with what everyone else is getting. Otherwise they would not be getting, getting, um, near as much. And if you're wondering, we have about 180. Excuse me, 213 times higher than I thought, 213 teachers that are at the top of the scales. So that would be a lot of people if we didn't do something to take care of, take care of those folks. That's a lot of our, obviously very veteran loyal, loyal staff members. So we need to make sure we're, we're taking care of them too. So those are all the changes. Um, I would just want to remind you really quick of all the steps that happened. So Board, most of these things have already happened or are happening as I'm sitting here talking to you. If you may recall, we had our pre-bargaining hearing back on September 2nd. We did that at one of your, at your work session in September. And then we just did the three days of, of formal interest-based bargaining. That was last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We, uh, we actually advertised this meeting, believe it or not, about three weeks ago. Truly it was because Karen was going to be gone. I didn't want to risk forgetting, so we did it early. So it was advertised a long time ago, um, but then we posted the tentative agreement on the website on Friday in accordance with the timeline we had to follow. We did that as soon as we were done Friday. We are currently sitting in the tentative agreement meeting right now. The next thing that happens is tomorrow Tracy and her team will be talking with all their members to go over the, the contract details. And then I believe they give them a few days to vote on it. Perfect. So, so what that means, and again, we're not involved in this process. This is a forums business only, but, um, the, as I said at the very beginning of this, part of the process is the, the forum itself also needs to ratify this. So meaning their membership needs to say, yes, we agree with this or no. So there is always a chance that their membership could say, you know, we don't like this. And if that happens, we would need to start bargaining again and sit down and, and come back to the table. I don't know if that's ever happened in Noblesville and I hope it doesn't happen tomorrow, but. So. Yep. Sure. Yeah. I'm, I'm sure it'll be fine. So assuming we get a, a yes at the end of the week from that, then Board, the very final step falls back to you. At your regular meeting on October 28th during the regular, uh, public meeting, this will be on there as a recommendation for approval and ratification. We do have to allow public comment, but we have public comment at every meeting. So there, but we do have to make sure people have a chance to comment before you vote, just in case someone from the community wants to come and speak to the contract. So we'll do that. And then assuming we've cleared all these steps, everything's done. I believe the last step is that, uh, I believe Christie signs on behalf of the board and I think Tracy signs on behalf of the teachers, if I remember right. So. There you go. I tried to move quick because I know we got other topics, but any, any questions for me or Christie or Tracy or, or David? Yes, we were all, all in there this year.
I do have two questions. One is as far as the participants in all of this, um, how do you determine which principals are participating?
Great question. Well, this was the first time they've ever participated. And so this time I, I felt it was really important that the high school principal was one of them because, and I think those in the process would agree. Janay was able to bring a lot of really important, um, perspective when we got to especially the extracurricular stuff that none of us was had. There was a lot of questions about what a lot of those positions do. And most of them are high school positions, as you know, because there's a lot of athletics and performing arts. So that was one that was kind of a, you know, that, that to me, that was a must. It had, we had to have a high school and, and so I had her kind of speak on behalf of all the secondaries. And then as far as the elementary principal, um, we had, we had never done this before. We, we decided to choose, or I should say, we, I decided to choose Tanya, um, partly because I know Tanya and Tracy have a great relationship because Tracy works in Tanya's building. And since this was new, I wanted everyone to feel very comfortable with, with the process. In the future, I don't know, wait, I, I may consider rotating elementary one. I guess I haven't thought that far ahead because this is the first time. I think it went very well.
Sure.
Right. And again, the, the idea, a lot of times we will do things for secondary where we kind of have the high school principal speak on behalf of middle school or vice versa. We do that sometimes in discussion and some other things too, where, um, part of it's really just being mindful of everyone's time, trying not to pull everybody out of both things too at the same time. So good question.
And then for the extra duty compensation, how does that determine what is allowed? Or what, at what point do we say, okay, you need to pay for this? Is there like?
Yeah, it's, it's spelled out in the contract. I don't know if the contract pulled up, but the, but essentially, basically the way I think of it is, is this something that is, um, that is basically the district is asking you to do it as part of your job? Versus where you're just volunteering because you want to do it, right? So like, so like if I said, well, I want to be a part of the social committee and it meets after school, but I've chosen to do that. That's not going to be a paid thing, but if it's something like, hey, we need you to stay after school a few days because we have to do some additional curriculum work and you have to be here. Then we need to compensate that person because they don't really have a choice.
So as maybe getting a little too much of this, but in that example.
Yep.
How does it determine what teachers or staff participate in the curriculum review?
Well, I wish Jenna Ryan was here because they could, they're probably the experts answer how they go about that choice. But they, but similar to most other things, I think they kind of have a set number that they know they're going to need to have a balance and they're looking for whatever. I would imagine there probably is a question of who is interested, but the way I think about that different than others is if no one said I was interested, we were going to make people do it anyway because we need to, because we gotta have somebody. So it's kind of a, you can volunteer. We still think should, we should pay you because someone's got to do it because we have to have it. But that's a great question. I, I can ask them to share a little more about their process later. I can, I can figure that out for them. So, yeah.
In regards to the one year, is this in hopes that the state legislature might revisit something and/or the state ends up picking up more money? What, what, help me understand what we might get out of.
Okay.
Why are we doing a one-year?
There, um, there are several unknowns in our world right now. And a few of the factors that really, and again, I don't want to steal David's thunder for the very next topic, but a little, but it, but it, but it matters here. What we really talked about in the room a lot was, yes, we just had some fairly significant changes from the legislature that is kind of up into the way we plan. So there is a little bit of hope that maybe they will improve a few things from SEA one in terms of how all our property taxes work. As you know, the referendum is a part of that and that's a big part of what helps fund our teacher contract. Two, um, the referendum will expire at the end of next year and we know that it is possible that the board will ask the community to reconsider that. So I guess I didn't say this explicitly, but I will, um, we discussed that we will probably wait and not bargain again next fall until after the referendum vote, assuming there is a referendum vote. So that we know what the community's decision was because it will matter, um, one way or another. It will change our planning, one direction or the other. We felt like that's kind of an uncertainty because we don't know for sure what will happen there. So we need to make sure we know that. And then the third, and this is a big one that we don't have a lot of control over, but it, it's awfully important is our enrollment. This year we saw a significant enrollment shift the wrong direction, which again, David and I know is going to talk about in just a second. So that will also make sure that we have a good handle on where that, where that is too. Cause all of those things, they all add up to dollars.
Multi-factorial.
Yes. So part of it is delaying in the hopes that maybe things are a little bit better. But nothing else, at least we will have certainty of where we are.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
Um, one of the things that I learned when it, when you talk about the stats, it's not the year that you're in, it's the year that you complete. So we look at the chart, it starts with zero, zero, it starts with a minus, it starts with zero. And now it's a new year, it gives you each, complete that stat.
Yep.
So that's it. I didn't really, I mean, I didn't really understand until I was involved in bargaining. So that's kind of, we talk about the stat, it's years complete, not the year that you're in. So you're not in your, you're not in your 20th year, that's in your 20th year.
Right. Yep. True. Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I will send them out as I unplug here.
Teacher steps. That's available as well, right?
It's in the, it's in the contract. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you go on our website, I mean, the, the current teacher contract is always on the web. Actually, I think we have several years prior too. But the current contract is always on the. Actually, I think we have several years prior too. Um, but the current contract is always on the website for the public to view. So you can pull that up and see what was already in there. And like I say, this time.
The number of teachers in each step.
Oh, no, that's not, that, we have that out. But if the board wants that, we can pull it.
Well, you mentioned the ones that are at the high level.
Mm-hmm.
Two hundred and.
Thirteen, two thirteen apparently.
Yeah.
There is a link.
I was wondering about retirement and uh, the new guy here, right? All the, the numbers um, this calculated. Re-hiring people that are going to retire in the next five years, that kind of thing. This is especially.
Say that again?
Yeah. The number of people that will be retiring in, in the budget. So you're going to bring in people of a much lower rate.
Well, see, that used to be what always happened, but that hasn't been very true lately.
Okay.
If I'm being really honest, and we talked about that as bargaining too, it, because some districts have tried retirement incentives to incentivize people to go ahead and retire with the idea that then you can hire cheaper people. But I will tell you. Well, it, it hasn't worked very well for te- districts that done it. And we've been tracking our data. And whereas I think David shared a few years ago, we would see anywhere from a five hundred to maybe even a million dollar savings every summer from hiring. This year, I think the savings was two thousand dollars.
Wow.
So it's not really working and part, and there's reasons for that. Part of it is the, their, the teacher shortage is very real. We don't talk about it as much anymore, but it's still there. And so, you know, we are hiring people with more experience and, because that's who's out there. And that's a good thing, but it's an expensive thing. Um, so.
With the last time we did contracts, we um, gave an incentive for uh, to notify us with the like five.
Yes. And we still have that. It's a thousand dollars if you let us know by January one. So that, that's more of a help the HR team out because they get your posting up sooner. It's not, that's not enough to make someone.
Right.
But yes, but good question. Yeah. We, we kept that because that actually really does help Heather and her team out a lot if we have a little more advanced notice. Um, so they can get the process started because then we get the best pool too. Versus somebody waiting until June to decide, oh, okay, I think I'll retire. So.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was before this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, right.
It didn't shift. Wait, for districts that do that, and again, we talked about this last week, just as we were brainstorming things. Um, I, I feel like from what I've heard from districts who tried it, the minimum you need to offer, the lowest that usually seems to get people's attention is twenty thousand dollars. And it just goes up from there. And even then, it's not necessarily guaranteeing that you're saving because A, some of those people might have, they might have retired anyway without the money. And, and again, you may not get lucky and hire somebody new. And we also talked about, well, maybe you can get people to retire and then we just wouldn't fill some of the positions. Maybe, but it depends on who leaves because if it's a position we have to fill, we're going to have to fill it. Um, so like if a physics teacher leaves, for example, they're hard to find and they're expensive. And we're going to have to fill it because we have to have physics. So i- it's, it's a gamble. And one that most districts who've done it have said, we don't really end up saving much money. So I'm not saying again, we won't ever talk about it, but it is, I think we have some other things we try first. So.
And the thing that we really talked about is, is the fact that, you know, teachers can retire really fairly young. And uh, it's the insurance.
Yeah, it is.
You know, it's the, it's the insurance. So you can retire, but you know, you can't um, go on Medicare until, you know, for several years after unless you have a spouse or something like that. So that, I think that's the big thing.
The state um, give us two percent increase, but minus the uh, fees that we have. I, I, this, I'm sure you're going to talk about this, right? Is how you developed.
That's a complicated answer.
Well, I know, I know.
I would say, no, they didn't actually give us two percent.
But yes, actually, well, one point seven or less than that.
Or that's tied to enrollment. So if your enrollment goes down, that doesn't necessarily mean you actually got more money anyway.
Are we down two hundred?
Mm-hmm. Yes, a little more than that.
Significant. Yeah.
It's a significant shift.
To see where those went.
We'll let you know in three months when that report comes out. Because you know, I watched that report and I will have a, a chat with you once we get it. But state, so how they just closed Wednesday, it usually takes the state two to three months to clean it all up, get the four, four part together, but they usually put it out in December or January. So as soon as I get it, I'll analyze it. We'll sit down and look at it.
There's so many variables here. So I'm not sure how you.
Well, it'd be interesting to see what HSE's open.
Yeah.
Enrollment.
Yeah, they didn't get very many.
Really? No.
They, they told me. They, they did not draw. I think they were very surprised the wrong way of how few they actually drew with that. Um, and again, Board, I, I don't want to get down that topic today, but that is always an option we can talk about if we feel like it's something we want to explore, but just after you've heard me say it a hundred times already, that's just a big decision. A lot of things to think about before we open that door.
The demographic studies said we're going to be flat and better than most of the other schools in Hamden County.
West, I mean, Westfield. Westfield's increasing.
Right.
Everyone else in Hamden County, I think, is, is, is declining in some.
Yeah.
Some way at the moment.
Actually already calculated.
It is. And like I said, there's, there's variables, right? There's other factors that are affecting this, not just birth rates and whatnot. Cool choice. There are families choosing to do other things and take their kids elsewhere, which is, which is fine. Um, but birth rates is part of it. The housing, the housing market is part of it.
Mm-hmm. I mean, look at the three of us right here. I mean, you know, our kids are in the house.
Yep.
Oh, hey, hey, speak for yourself. Speak for yourself. Yes.
Right.
Right? So.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on this? So we can move on.
So, but Tracy, you feel like you've got a good pulse on this?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and one of the things, because Tracy knew what I, that I was going to do my presentation for the full staff that, that you guys all had a chance to come to a couple of months ago. And part of it was to get ahead of this a little bit because we knew this bargaining was going to feel different than the last few years.
And they're, they're not dumb. They know this is why this was happening too.
So hopefully people heard what I was saying. And so to me, I still think it's a pretty big win that we were able to do raises.
I agree. Oh, for sure. Yeah.
There will be some districts in the state that will not do anything this year. They won't be able to. So the fact that we were still in a position to do some things for our staff makes me feel really good. Even though, yes, it will feel not as good when you're used to something bigger, but.
Well, and I've heard some districts um, talking about getting into their rainy day funds to provide like a one-year raise or.
Period.
Right?
That's.
Right.
That's a dangerous.
Just slippery slope.
That's a dangerous precedent to start because, um, again, I was probably just stopped because David's going to talk about the budget and he's probably going to acknowledge some of these things. So.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, all right. David, we are moving into our budget hearing.
Yeah, Board, uh, thank you so much for the, the time this afternoon. I, I think, uh, you know, it certainly, you know, the, the stuff that we're talking about today, you know, I, I know is one of the mind you do here within the district, when you think about today about how we spend on salaries in person. That is really, you know, certainly um, impacts overall. Really appreciate your, your, your time today to be able to put details as well as uh, uh, when we do the, the public. And then I go to the presentation. Now, what I call. Is, is. And uh, well, we'll go from there. So. All right. So that's going to be up from about. So that those are, and it will all be in the. Five funds that you're very familiar with, these are the, the buckets of, of dollars that we, we use. Do in, in this. Every year. So, you know. Go grants, for example. Answered, or like. By the DLGF through the, the certified budget order, which is the process after the, the board approves the budget on the twenty-eighth that I then send all the information to the DLGF and we work back and forth uh, to, to ultimately then certify the budget for twenty twenty-six. So today I'll go through the sources, what I call the sources, the revenues for the, each of the funds, as well as the uses or the expenditures for each of the funds. Uh, starting first with the education fund, but before we get into the education fund, of course, we, I just mentioned that we'll talk about enrollment today. And so you see a chart here just for the little over ten years, about thirteen years worth of enrollment trends here. Seeing what we just alluded to, that for fall ADM of twenty-five, twenty-six, where we uh, in fact, it, it'll be a little bit higher because we are sorting out those, what we call those, those, those errors or those transfers. I think last I looked, it was like ten, one oh six, but for the budget, it's uh, ten, one hundred. So down just over two hundred students or uh, about two percent overall. Uh, just for your knowledge, I, I, I do happen to have a historical ADM chart for Noblesville, and I noticed that this is the largest uh, decrease in ADM in probably Noblesville schools' history. Uh, because like I said, the chart I had went back to seventy-six where there was less than four thousand students. So I can't imagine that we, we decreased um, more than two hundred uh, beyond that. So obviously this is going to play a major role in the, in the budget, to play a major role in bargaining in terms of the monies, available monies on the table. And, and that's to say that, you know, um, you'll recall last uh, last November, almost a year ago, we uh, had Dr. McKibben here. We, you know, paid ten thousand dollars for his expertise to, to tell us what's going to happen to Noblesville enrollment over the next ten years. And as was mentioned, he said it was going to be relatively stable. And um, we, we, we know then, you know, again, we, we talked about the impact of vouchers. Uh, you know, and, and he mentioned, I do believe he said in that meeting, or I've heard him say in other arenas as well, virtual, right? That's another major impact now that, that we're going to see. And that's why we're really anxiously awaiting this transfer report, just to see how many students that live in Noblesville may be attending, you know, Clarksville down by the river, or, you know, Tippecanoe, where it's likely they're virtual academies that they're now enrolling in. Uh, and, and then ultimately I think homeschool is, is another factor out there that we're, we're just starting to anecdotally hear a lot more about and, and realize that that's probably going to be those, those three major factors there are, are, you know, really impacting our, our enrollment number there. So unfortunately, we're, we're down two hundred. And um, you know, that, that, that trend is, is what you're seeing there. For the last four years, we've seen decreases. And you know, if, if any of us were, were betting folks, we, you know, we know that we have a higher uh, senior class than, than kindergarten class. And so y- y- you know, it's just to say that right now, I think we're, we're being very cautious and conservative as it relates to uh, the, the budget and our predictions for enrollment moving forward.
So now just one quick question. So last year's graduating class, that was the highest class that has gone through Noblesville though, correct?
That's what I was told.
And then this class was what, like ten plus than, or still like the second highest? Yeah, this year's senior?
Yeah, they're very big.
Yeah. Okay.
It's.
Kind of expected, but it still doesn't make it easy to.
Right. Yep. Good question.
So pulling out what is uh, the, the ten thousand one hundred students into the, the funding formula, the funding formula that has been revised by the General Assembly in the past budget session to of course increase the, the per pupil amount, as well as some of those categorical grants. Those categorical grants include the, the CTE reimbursement, the special education, the honors diploma, and the, the non-English speaking. Uh, so when I basically put all the numbers together and run it through the formula for next year's budget, uh, or next year's calendar year, uh, it's eighty, about eighty-five million dollars in total through that state funding formula based on that ADM count. Uh, for, for us, that's about uh, for the, when you add in the foundation or the basic grant with complexity, for us, it's uh, just shy of seventy-two hundred, seven thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars per pupil. Uh, so if, again, if you're thinking some, some rough math here, you take the, the seventy-two hundred per pupil times the, the two hundred that we were down in students, and, and you're just shy of about one point five million dollars that we would have loved to have in our budget, had our enrollment stayed stable, but unfortunately it didn't. So, you know, as it relates to that eighty-five million dollars there, that's going to be reflective of, again, the, the, the true ADM versus what, where we would have liked that to have been. Moving on then to uh, the, the summer school reimbursement at a hundred thousand dollars. So that's something that is continuing to decrease. In fact, we haven't received our summer school reimbursement. It's always, it always comes in uh, late November, December uh, for, for each of the summers. But we know that our expenses are going down. Uh, uh, Dr. Dr. Rich and I think uh, the, the, the forum have engaged in the summer school committee to, to review that. So we brought expenses down, meaning that reimbursement is, is going to be less there. So uh, bringing that down to a hundred thousand dollars for next year. Investment income, well, we're very fortunate to, to have some cash in the bank that uh, based on uh, predictions for next year or estimate, I'm putting it at one point three million dollars. It is unfortunate though that I, I continue to see our, our rate in trust Indiana go down. In fact, today it was at like four point one one uh, versus last year was over five percent. So this is one of those areas where it's, it's always tough to budget. I usually budget it less conservative, but this year just trying to, to kind of really squeak out revenue wherever possible. So maybe a little bit aggressive on the investment income, but uh, it's definitely sizable enough to, to make sure that we, we get it in there to, to um, improve our overall position. And then finally, some miscellaneous there, two hundred sixty thousand dollars for a total of eighty-six point seven million dollars in our education fund for revenue.
I have a question. Federal money, is that all going to start coming through the state? Like, I understand uh.
Are you referring to the block grant uh, request? Are you, are you referring to the, the request for a block grant?
Title grant, federal money and.
It already comes through the state.
Okay. All of it. Okay. So like ML money is going to be discontinued, I understand. We, I mean, those are the.
That's just this right now. Don't, don't worry about it.
I need to quit watching the news.
Yes, that's good advice. There's a lot of, there's a lot of chatter. It are, all, all the federal grants flow through the state anyway. Like they, they, the Fed's kind of huge check to all the states. The states find, figure out their formulas to divvy them up. But Indiana has recently made a request to change how that works and to give us some initial flexibility, but I don't believe anything's actually changed yet. But Katie, Dr. Jenner has been speaking at, to DC about Indiana would like a different uh, authority, I suppose, to, to have a little more flexibility in how they distribute those funds. So we'll see. But as of now, nothing's changed.
So the revenue I just reviewed is going to fund then a budget in the education fund next year, just shy of eighty-one million dollars. In addition to that revenue, we will also be using about four point four million dollars of fund balance. So in other words, that, that cash in the bank, um, ending, which, which allows us then to end twenty twenty-six with uh, about fifteen percent of our budget uh, in the education fund. Meaning that uh, there will be enough cash in the budget at, right at fifteen percent of that eighty-one million dollars. That's uh, relative because our, our board policy says that at any point in time, uh, we, we will maintain a minimum between eight and fifteen percent. I, I usually like to be uh, just north of fifteen percent, just based on uh, the overall size of our budget, the unknowns that always come into play every, every year at the state legislature. And, and then again, the ability to um, earn interest income, as well as uh, maintain a, a high credit rating uh, based on the cash on hand. The um, it really comes as no surprise that the, the dollars here fund the salaries and benefits of, of really our, our teachers, instructional assistants, and, and some administrators as well. Uh, again, the education fund is to be used for classroom instruction. So supplies or excuse me, salaries and benefits is really where that falls in terms of the majority. In fact, it's about ninety-seven percent of the overall budget here goes to, to fund salaries and benefits. Uh, and then again, the remainder, you can kind of see here, sorry, it is a little small, but you know, some, some services, some contracted services, uh, tuition, which would be um, that's like our co-op payment, as well as some supplies and then dues and fees uh, bringing up at point zero two percent. So other, other categories are very small in the education budget. This uh, is where we also primarily fund the, the changes that we just discussed in the collective bargaining agreement. So mi- uh, moving everyone a step was about one point three million dollars. So that's going to be funded, of course, in this appropriation right here, as well as shared in the referendum fund, which I'll touch on here in just a little bit. We also uh, had the um, ability this year to, to have a work session, which was almost a little bit over a month ago, where we talked in a lot more detail about some of the, the bigger factors. But just to remind you that we had increases to health insurance, uh, which uh, ultimately, based on the change that Dan talked about in there with the um, repricing, uh, we were able to get that down to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the district increase. And then um, the three hundred thousand dollar increase for the, the TURF, uh, that teacher retirement fund, that mandatory employer portion that was increasing from six point five percent to seven point one percent. So those are, those are funded in this eighty-one million dollar appropriation as well. All right. So moving on from the education fund to our property tax supported funds that um, I'll just really focus only on property taxes. There's some other miscellaneous revenues in there, but they're, they're really small. Touch on those in the budget book. You can look at those, uh, as well as then those, those taxes, those state taxes that are shared locally. So that's the auto excise, the commercial vehicle excise, and the financial institution tax are, are also um, you know, in, in these funds. But uh, for the most part, it's property tax and, you know, it can't be a, a budget hearing this fall without mentioning SCA one. I know we've talked about it a lot, uh, and I'll just reference it really at high level. So this is not going to be an SCA one overview. It's just really, what is, what is the impact of that, you know, specifically to our numbers this year? So um, well, let's, let's first talk about assessed value. So looking at the operations and debt service fund, twenty-five to twenty-six, from, from five point three million dollars to uh, or excuse me, billion dollars, five point three billion to five point six billion dollars, uh, which is about a five point one percent increase, which, you know, hey, when it comes down to it, knowing that we, there were going to be some deductions that were phased in, some business personal property exemptions uh, phased in as well. Uh, this first year of SCA one to see an increase, uh, we're very fortunate to, to see that. Uh, I will say though, that next year is absolutely projected that, that we would not see an increase. On the uh, referendum side, you see our referendum debt and then our referendum operating, going from six point two to six point six. So the reason these assessed values are different here is because it's the, the tip districts, right? And um, the increase here is about six point seven million dollars. So, or six point seven percent. And when you start to see a little bit higher. And when you start to see a little bit higher increase in your, in your uh TIF included funds, you know, it, it may start to trigger the, the thought of, well, there, you know, there is a lot of, a lot of, a lot of TIF value, a lot of captured value. Uh, and so if it wasn't for the referendum, you know, it'd be a different story. But because we had that referendum, we are absolutely uh receiving benefit from those, those TIF districts. Uh, so, so very thankful for the growth that's happening there in those funds. Moving into the, the blue then, on the rate side, twenty-five to twenty-six, uh, happy to, to state like we talked about during the bond hearing earlier in the summer that uh for the seventh straight year, we will be decreasing our tax rate. I mentioned earlier though, that with the assessed value decreasing, uh, just want to put it out there, you know, well over a year ahead of time, we've already been saying this, but next year fully anticipate our tax rate to actually increase. And that is fully the design and the intent of this, I believe, of the state legislature to have tax rates increase. They've, they've spoken this, they want everyone to get to a three cent rate, because at that point then, in time, they're going to just truly overhaul the system and work within that three, three cent rate. Uh, so our rate will, will be increasing because the assessed value is going to go down. And so we need to of course increase the rate to earn the same amount of the levy, which is there in the orange. So you see how in twenty-six, we go from uh about seventy-one million to about seventy-five million dollars next year. Driven primarily from the referendum operating fund due to the fact that that rate cap was uh eliminated. In other words, our voter approved rate was allowed to be restored to thirty-seven cents uh in twenty twenty-six. So going from the thirty-four cents to thirty-seven cents, uh, nets us a little over uh three point five million dollars, which is, was a great help based on the fact that we were really budgeting all along on, on that going uh away the, the year before, based on it kind of being a one-year piece of legislation that they came back and, and renewed. So that's the uh, the overview uh on, on, on the property taxes. And um, moving forward then in terms of what those property tax fund, looking at our operating referendum fund, total budget next year, twenty-six point two million dollars. Using just under five hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, this is a fund that we've been strategically spending down the, the balance. It, it's had a high balance uh really since the passage in twenty eighteen, the first year in twenty nineteen, it's maintained a high balance. Uh, but in looking at those dollars, we've decided, you know, let's, let's work on uh spending those down. So next year's budget, spending down about a half million dollars, ending the twenty twenty-six budget year at about twenty-two percent of the overall budget. Used to be much higher than that, so that's uh dramatic spend down from what it's been uh going back to about twenty twenty. Again, no surprise that uh in this case, about ninety-three percent of the dollars here going to salaries and benefits. We are uh, uh, you know, an industry on personnel. And so um outside of that, it goes to um purchase services and supplies uh in, in the safety category. So our safety program uses services and supplies. And then in the tuition, uh, about three point two percent, that's about eight hundred thousand dollars that we budget for uh the Pursuit Institute. Um, and you know, all of our career technical opportunities at the high school, whether, you know, it's through All Heart or the ABC agreement. Uh, it's going to be those opportunities budgeted in the, in the tuition category there. Uh, so, so again, obviously the um, the salaries, benefits, uh, our CTE opportunities, uh, safety, as well as our mental health personnel, all funded out of our referendum fund. Our debt service, I'm, I really uh combine both of our debt service funds here, just to give you the overall picture. Uh, from the first slide, I mentioned that when you combine them, it's about twenty percent of our overall budget. So that, that total is about thirty-four million dollars in total. This is the, the sum total of, we have fourteen outstanding bonds. So when I, when I, every year, when I go through each of the amortization schedules and add up the principal and interest, uh, this is going to be the annual amount that's owed in twenty twenty-six. Um, so it's really not, not too much to call out here, other than the fact that, you know, as expected, we've talked during our budget hearings about how we try to be aggressive in our, in our paydown in some of our most recent bonds. So you see right on the top in our twenty twenty-four and twenty-five general obligation bonds, we're going to be uh spending uh or, you know, buying down a, a little over four million dollars in principal and interest next year. Trying to get that aggressive payoff and um, and get those debts paid off uh sooner rather than later. Last, I just mentioned that the capital referendum, I think we talked about this before, but that expires in, in twenty thirty-two. So that'll be the last year that I'll be calculating the debt service in the budget for that fund. All right, moving on to the operations fund, total budget next year of twenty-eight point nine seven million dollars. This fund is actually projecting to use about two point five million dollars in fund balance, ending the year at about eighteen percent of budget overall. So once again, we're, we're spending down dollars in our operations fund. Uh, but when I, when I, I, I say the operations funds spend down, I, I talk about the referendum spend down, as well as the education fund down, fund spend down. I looked at those funds, I refer to those funds really as our general funds, because uh, as we know, the referendum fund can be used for anything. Education fund is for classroom instruction, which is really the majority of our, our operation. And then the operations fund, uh, the, the transfer is allowed from the head fund to the operations fund of up to fifteen percent of that state um tuition support payment. So with that transfer, I, I really just refer to all these funds as, you know, our, our general funds. That's, that's to say that when you add up uh the, the four point four, the two point five and, and spend down in the half million dollars in the um referendum fund, you're just at about seven million dollars projected spend down in our, in our, um, in our funds next year, which again, it's a budget. There's, there's areas where I need to budget high because there's unknowns. There's, there's reasons to budget high because um, not just in operations, but you know, if there were to be, you know, just things, things that happen with some of our equipment, right? You know, whatever that may be, uh, that there's reasons to budget high. Uh, and even with bargaining again next year, there's reasons to put in some extra appropriation, uh, so then that way we can get through the year, not having to come back and, and do an additional appropriation late in the year. So right now, yes, it may be a budgeted uh deficit of just over seven million dollars, but I truly don't anticipate it to, to be that high. Um, all the, the details behind uh and, and seeing that, seeing the spend down will, will be in the budget book. So if you go to the fund performance, you'll, you'll see the spend in our, in our budget, fund performance, when I send that out in the budget book. Dollars and benefits though are, are once again high in operations fund. So in this case, about uh fifty-six percent of the overall budget. Uh, beyond that, uh, the other um forty-four percent, I'll, I'll talk about here really in this slide. Uh, utilities and waste removal, almost three point two million dollars. You may remember me referencing the fact that the seventeen percent increase to Duke electricity is going to be fully implemented by March of next year, which we're expecting that to be about two hundred thousand dollar impact. So again, something that's, I guess inflation that's outs- outside of our control. Uh, technology, uh, about a two uh point one million dollar budget. So that's a, a software and hardware, and that's one of the areas, uh, as you know and recall with um, like the iPads. And there's some other tech things that, that we're able to pull out of the budget and to purchase those in the bonds. And that's been one way that we've been able to free up operational dollars to be able to truly put back into the salaries and benefits. Uh, we've been doing the same thing with bus purchases. So uh, you may look at this dollar amount here for the buses at six hundred and thirty-six thousand and, and reckon and realize, well, in the past, it's always been over a million dollars. You know, when we replace seven, eight buses and, and yes, it has been. But this is the difference then when you take out six hundred thousand dollars, which if, again, if you remember back to bond here, and we, we got about one point two million dollars for, for buses. Six hundred thousand dollars over the next two years. So again, free up dollars in the operations fund. So this is, you, you guys seen this really play out when we talked about that, um, you know, months ago in, in the bond and how we're going to pay for buses out of that. Legal transportation, so this would be like McKinney Vento, McKinney Vento uh transportation and um other miscellaneous services, just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. Vehicle fuel, parts and tires. So really this is the uh primarily for the, the buses, about six hundred thousand dollars worth of fuel. And then uh the rest goes to, to parts and like I said, tires and, and sometimes even our, our mechanics, um, or there's jobs that they can't do. So we, we have some budget in there for them to have that done uh from an outside provider. And then insurance budgeting about eight percent increase to, to, for a total of one point five million dollars. So this is, you know, going to be property casualty, um, and um our various insurances outside of health insurance. I, I am happy to report though, that this is an area where um, working, working with our, our broker that has other schools in his book of business, we're looking into exploring uh a pooling uh program that would bring together uh some other schools, uh nearby schools, uh specifically on the, the property and the auto, that uh, that they've had success within uh the Assured Partners realm with other, within other states. And he's optimistic and uh that, that we could do it here as well. And so I'd like to think that that could be an area where, again, we're just always trying to, you know, be strategic with some of these. If you think about it, right, we talked about so much of our budget being funded uh or funding personnel. And uh, in, in fact, you remember from Dan's presentation, it was, I think, high eighties for this year. And uh for twenty twenty-six, I did the calculation, it's about eighty-seven percent goes to the salaries and benefits of personnel. So when we have um, you know, difficult times or we need to go through, you know, periods of austerity, you know, yes, there's some areas of it in personnel, but it only leaves thirteen percent elsewhere. And so that's where, you know, you know, I start going through the, the budget to think like, where else can we get creative here? And so this is obviously a big, you know, it's a seven-figure dollar number when we're talking about our insurance. And year over year, you know, that number's going to, it's going to increase, but how can we then be uh innovative with, with trying to pull within other schools to essentially, essentially be self-insured? Just like we're on the health insurance side, do basically the same thing on, on the property side as well. Uh, so, so more to come on that, but uh one point five million dollars budget for next year in total there. And then finally, uh, within buildings and grounds, about three point eight million dollars. You know, this is going to be miscellaneous equipment, uh, services on the main inside, as well as some capital items, uh, that I'll show you here in, in the capital plan. Uh, you know, you guys know this, you know, we're, we're a massive operation, right? We're a hundred seventy-plus million dollar budget, uh, ten schools. And, and so whether you know, it, whether or not it's a piece that breaks on a chiller or boiler or, you know, an interesting stat to share with you is that, you know, hey, we have almost six hundred sprinkler heads throughout the district. Right? So just, you know, sprinkler heads alone, right? Like it's, you gotta pay for it somewhere, right? And, and you have all these little things that just kind of add up sometimes that uh, you know, this is where, you know, one, one of those breaks or, or a motor blade, whatever it is, uh, it's the three point eight million dollar budget here that's going to pay for, for that item. All right, so the, the next two slides, I know this is small, but uh the details are in the buzzer book. Uh, it's a statutory requirement pursuant to, you can see the code site here, IC twenty dash forty-six dash six dash five, that uh for any capital equipment items over ten thousand, that we would, you know, list them and it's, this has actually been posted on gateway. It's a, you know, statutory requirement. This will be a resolution for the, for the board to approve on the twenty-eighth meeting. And um, most of it on the top is really just technology items, followed then by some of the equipment, equipment, so like four. Uh, mount to thirty-four thousand. So those sorts of items that again, as a statutory requirement, we list those here. But as I mentioned, they were funded in that last line item on the previous slide. And then the same thing with the bus replacement, uh, for the sake of today's presentation, to, to make sure that we, you know, talked about it. This is uh the, the five-year bus replacement plan that, that we are to, to discuss in, in, uh, in summary. In the twenty twenty-six column, that's where I mentioned earlier, took six thousand, six hundred thousand dollars from that total to get to the total uh from the bond, to get to the total that is then in the operations fund. And then for the next five years, uh, that's, that's me working with uh Director of Transportation, Rob Williamson, and uh planning that out for the, about the one hundred twenty-seven buses that we have. So all buses are on this plan. If you, if you look out in the future years, uh, getting every bus replaced essentially at the twelve-year mark is what it comes down to. That'd be happy to answer any questions.
Eighty-seven percent of the hundred seventy million salaries and benefits, correct?
That's right. Uh, excuse me, um, the hundred seventy minus the debt service. So the debt service was, I think, at twenty-five. So I take a debt service.
So we're a hundred fifty million, take that service out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Eighty-seven percent of.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, I don't think, I, I just think the average Joe does. Does that realize that number, then when we cut negotiations, trying to figure out how to get more to teachers, there's not much other area to wring things out of.
Yeah, and I, I think one of the things I guess I didn't really mention is, we talked about enrollment and we talked just briefly about ADM, but let's just recognize the fact that, you know, when you're sitting in our seats and you're thinking about, hey, if there are two factors that um represent kind of your financial health, you know, what would they be? I think we'd all say it's in your enrollment and your assessed value. And unfortunately, right, both of those right now are, are, are decreasing, right? So that's where I think we're just being very cautious in terms of our, our future outlook. And we're just trying to be very mindful in terms of, you know, making sure that, you know, we can sustain the, the deficit spending that we're, we're, that we have right now, so that we always maintain a very healthy position.
You know, I still, once I said, we're a business and we got to sell ourselves, so we don't lose. More, it'll be interesting to see what you're going to come up with when we come up where they've been, okay? Uh, and, and where we can sell that to try to keep it the flattest we can, uh, fighting all the other things that are outside of us, so we can't, you know.
And my, my gut will be, we might see some, some shifts of kids going places, but I think an increasing factor is just there are less.
There's lots too.
Moving into the district too.
So I, I agree.
I think we're going to see both. We'll see, we'll see what the number is.
Anything we can do to market, we got to do, okay?
And the only, again, not to bring up the topic that we're not going to talk about today, but the only way districts somewhat control the enrollment piece is if they go open, because technically you could try to entice students who don't live here to come, but yeah, might relabel that today.
Yeah.
But.
Future thoughts.
Future thoughts, yes.
That is an option. So, but it doesn't always work, so.
Yeah, but it is interesting that eighty-seven percent of the budget, obviously minus the debt service is salaries and benefits. Because when it comes to, you know, us as a district cutting costs or being more effective on saving money, you know, you really don't have a lot of wiggle room, right? Because most of, I mean, the largest percentage of, of your budget is, is employees and salaries, right? And, and you don't want to cut that. So it's not like there's other areas that we could be more, whatever, mindful of, I guess, so to speak.
And, and I think that'll be an important thing that will probably come out again. I'm going to make a big assumption here that we are going to have a referendum conversation next year. And um, that's why the question that I posed at the staff meeting a couple, a couple of months ago, it still holds true that, you know, that is where most of our money goes, to people. So if someone suggests that, well, you need to spend your money differently, or you're wasting money somewhere, the question becomes, well, what is that? Because it is people that is most of our money.
Right.
Now again, if push came to shove, that's also where we would have to cut. So we would have to figure out what that means.
Right.
And for what it's worth, I mean, David didn't share it, but you know, we are constantly looking at ways to streamline some positions and one. We actually, just in last month, have had two positions that have come open that we didn't fill, because we thought, you know, oh, I think we can do it without, we're going to save some money here and not fill them. Um, that helps shore some of these things up over time, but.
Yeah.
With, with two hundred students, you know, we're, we're short two hundred students, is that sometimes, obviously kind of always keep your eye on that. You got to see where the class was fall, I mean, like you said.
Yep. And there, and there's, yes, I think I know where, maybe where you're going with this, because some people say with two hundred students, well, then you should need like, what, eight less teachers, right? Well, sure, if they all came out of the same school in the same grade, but they didn't, they were spread out over ten schools and all the grades. And so yes, there is a tipping point. And again, we don't talk about it a lot necessarily, because it's not something we need to discuss, but that's part of the HR team is every year as we're doing that, they do look at the various schools. And sometimes they say, hey, White River, we need to reduce one third grade section because your class numbers are so low now that we could actually remove one. Or hey, we need to add one over here. So that happens quietly behind the scenes, but the hard part is exactly that. It's, it's rarely so clean and easy. Because again, if it was two hundred all in one spot.
Right.
That makes opportunities, but it's not, it's two here, three there.
Different grade level.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, two hundred over really thirteen grades when you consider kindergarten.
Divided by ten schools.
Divided by ten schools is really not that many, no, right? To cut, to, to be able to cut staff or whatever.
So it just, it, yeah. And that, again, that's a hard concept for people to, to track to, because it's, and you know, you think about civil math, that, well, you're going down to students, you need to cut staff. Well, maybe, but all the things still have to happen. We still have to have all the services, you know.
And when you come back at us with those numbers of reasons why, it, it'd be also helpful and, and mindful to think what else is going on at all panels in county. We, we, we know that just from reading things, you know, what's, what are the other five or six schools done?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
A lot of ways, if you look at that information.
This is, this is not, you heard me say this before, this is not unique to Noblesville. I would say this is the norm in almost every district in the state. There's a few exceptions, but most districts are experiencing very similar versions of this. The specifics vary by community depending on some factors in each one of us. Um, there are a few that are truly growing, but there's not many. Um, the, the assessed valuation uh problem with SCA one looks different in every community, but everyone's feeling it somehow, just bearing levels or whatever. Again, one thing that we are so blessed is that we have had a business team that has been planning and, you know, making really good decisions. So we're still in a, in a fine position right now. Some districts do not have the ability to navigate this the way that we're navigating this, because they don't have the, the cash reserves and some of the things on hand to, to get through it. So they're going to have much more urgent decisions coming their way.
So, so the assessment evaluation, David, it's two years behind, am I correct?
Correct.
When we use, what's, knowing we're two years behind, what's next year? If you know what the numbers are, look at the adjusted valuation for next year.
I think from a market standpoint, I think that, I think that it's every reason to believe that we probably still see some increases, but it's all the deductions from SCA.
They're going to add, we don't know for sure what they're all adding in.
Correct, yeah, as they phase in from going from the one-third to the two-thirds on the home set. That's what's really going to bring down our assessed value in the next four years, five years.
So we may have to see the normal increase because of the new laws.
Deduction.
It's plugged in for the next, that, that, does it exponentially get a little bigger for the next two or three years?
It does, yeah, that's that, that's that infamous chart, I, you know, I have it memorized.
Well, no, I, I don't need that.
That's it, that's the one, right? It goes, it phases in from one-third to two-thirds, as well as the factors.
So, so again, what we talked about three or four years ago, before they changed the law, we knew kind of what was coming. That was kind of more fuzzy.
Yeah.
Based on the new laws that affect though.
It is fuzzy, yeah. And you know what? It, it could just so happen that our assessed value maybe is, is, is level, or maybe it's a tenth of a percent increase. Like we, we just don't really know, it's, it's really hard to say, um, especially being the fact that we do have a lot of com- commercial coming online, right?
Yeah. And just the point of clarity, what you, what you just asked about though, I think is what's going to be very confusing for a while until people get used to this new system, assuming they don't change again. until people get used to this new system, assuming they don't change again, is the assessed value is actually going to keep going up.
Yes.
But what we are able to tax and what leads to revenue will not, because there's all these, again, if you remember back to my presentation, we, we talked at a very high level about all of the credits and deductions that are gonna just take money right off the top. So even though the AV will, our AV is gonna keep going up, but it won't be taxed like it was, it will still generate less money. Cause there's outside things that will knock it back down.
And that's hard to understand for a lot of people, right? It's, it's confusing.
Right.
The gross gross net.
So again, thinking about the charts David put together and that I shared before, that will be the trend through thirty, thirty-one. And then it's fully implemented, and then it should start coming back up again. But that's a long time to ride the train on ground too. So we have to be able to navigate that five, six-year period. And again, who knows? I mean, legislature very well could make some adjustments to all this. But we have to play on that they haven't, so.
The third year's a heavier hit, right? Twenty-eight from SP one for the state.
Um, that's, I, it's, the biggest is gonna come from the homestead deduction. And next year goes up to, from thirty-seven and a half to forty. And then from there, it's, yeah, it's, it gets to sixty-six percent at some point, or by twenty thirty-one. How it gets to, I can't remember, it's a three or four percent every year, five percent.
What's the likelihood that it's gonna be changed, they're gonna change next year? Looked the point, right?
That's, that's.
Who are you talking about?
Couldn't even answer that question.
Well, it's.
Depends on who you ask.
Right?
Yeah.
Some people feel very optimistic, I don't feel very optimistic. Um, because there's a lot of pressure out there with the idea of lowering taxes or property tax reform or whatever. And depending on who you ask, some folks would say, oh yeah, they need to fix this because they've done harm to all of our local government units. There are some people that say, no, they, nah-uh, they need to fix it, the other way, they didn't cut it. Yeah, it depends on who you're talking to.
Well, the realized money coming back to the homeowner, three hundred dollars is not more than.
If you don't know, it's ten percent or a maximum of three hundred dollars.
I don't, I don't think many people are actually wanting to see relief in their property tax books. So it would be very interesting.
Yeah. But then as part of that SCA one, which I think I mentioned before, we lost our geothermal tax credit. Due to one of those changes. Right, so, I mean, it's.
I didn't know that.
So, so that three hundred dollars you were gonna get is.
True, that's too bad.
One other thing on SCA one, just to remember, a lot of, when they talk about cleanup, yes, there is a property tax aspect of, of SCA one, but there's also a local income tax aspect. The local income tax is, they, they kind of messed that up, from what I understand. Just remember, we don't get any local income tax in our budget. Other, some schools do, but we, we do not get any local income tax. So I absolutely believe that they're gonna clean up some of the local income tax. When it relates, as it relates to that property tax chart with the deductions and the credits, I, I don't think that they're gonna touch that at all. Because that leads into what they're, what they wanna do come twenty thirty-two, they need to get that chart implemented first. Uh, so, so again, just remember, when you start your cleanup, a lot of that is actually related to income tax that we don't, we don't even get in our budget.
Right. Seventeen percent increase from Duke?
Correct.
What was the last increase?
Uh, I think it was nine, so it was, because it was a phase in, so it was a nine percent increase, and then it was a seventeen percent increase.
Was it the clean coal?
I don't know. I, I, I mean, I, I think you see, I've not been falling too close, but I think I U R C has been under fire lately. Because it's not just Duke, but AES is, yeah, they're all, yeah, they're looking at the board members on the I U R C, all that stuff.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it's a mess.
Well, thank you, David. I mean, we're, we're very lucky, it's my hotline, we, we all agree, I think we're all very lucky to have you and.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you guys are, your, your support is just incredible too, so it's just a pleasure to work with this wonderful team, so.
So just to re, just to review for the sake of the, the timeline, so David will, um, I think the budget gets recommended at the October meeting, right?
Correct.
So that'll come back to you here in a few weeks.
And you're gonna send some slides and the whole, the whole big.
I'll send all the slides to you in one email, so you just have one.
Tell me what the budget book looks like.
Make sure I have that.
Oh, yep.
What?
What it looks like?
When is it a, is it a preliminary, your, the budget book?
Oh, it's a, it's PDF. It's PDF with some.
Yeah, I mean, is it a, just a worksheet that you're gonna update?
No, it's less than, uh, it's like twenty. Yeah, it's like twenty.
It just goes to some more detail.
Of course, yeah.
As you think about this.
A lot more qualitative stuff. And then I call the fund performance, so you see the performance of our funds.
Yeah.
Based on the object code of the expense and the revenue type, and then you see the, the fund performance of the.
The microphone public record too.
Correct, yeah.
If he's with you.
It'll all be out there.
Right, to explain it.
Yeah.
Yep, it'll all be out there.
Okay, anything else on? Okay. Okay.
All right.
Here we go.
Special education, so on September fourth, we, uh, were able to do a, um, special education kind of road tour, right? We're just taking guys.
That was amazing.
It was a great time, we could do it anytime, right?
What's good for you next month?
That's right. Later on, November, right? Uh, so we were able to take you guys on kind of a tour of all the things, special education. And then from that tour, there were additional questions and topics that you guys kind of wanted to go over. So those are some things that Amy and I will go through here in our, um, more presentation.
Yeah, so we wrote down, as you guys had questions, I had jotting down, um, the questions that you had, and these were the topics. So we've taken the topics and we've added slides. So I know, um, the first topic was, there was a question about what's the, what's the difference between a student with a medical diagnosis and school eligibility? Um, so a student with a medical diagnosis doesn't automatically qualify for special ed services. There has to be an educational impact, so that's where the evaluation comes into play. Data's looked at, assessments are given, teachers give input, um, you have a lot of rating scales sometimes that they complete to see if there is an educational impact. It's not just grades that we're looking at, but that is a, a piece of data that we look at. Um, there are many students in our district that have outside medical diagnoses that do not qualify for special ed services. So it's not a, you have a medical diagnosis, you automatically qualify. And many times, um, students, uh, needs can be met on a five oh four plan. Uh, students may just need some level of accommodations, and those needs can be met through a five oh four versus a special ed eval and IEP.
Can you summarize what a five oh four is compared to?
Yes, uh, really, a five oh four plan is just accommodations.
Okay.
Um, so maybe a student has a diagnosis of like ADD or ADHD, and they just need smaller group, um, extended time, I'm kind of looking at Tracy just because you're like, live it, but yeah, they just need accommodations. Whereas special ed, when you get into special ed, they need accommodations, but they need services.
Okay.
So they need a special ed teacher or therapist providing some kind of support to them on a daily, weekly basis. Whereas you don't get services per se with a five oh four plan.
And if we go back to talk about what we kind of did in our, our work session before we did our tours, is that we have, um, legal binding guiding documents, right? Like Article seven comes from IDEA, and then Article seven, five oh four lives under ADA, the American Disabilities Act, right? And five oh fours can carry into adulthood and workplace environments too.
Yes, okay.
Accommodations versus, um, services.
Really, that ADA is what will follow them, like Erin just said, into adulthood. Because the whole world of special ed, IEPs ends when the student exits or graduates from high school.
There's nothing that falls outside those two accommodations, or those ADA and five oh four, special ed.
So five oh four or special education.
Okay, because there was a discussion, I don't know, a few months ago, that there were, some people had a concern that, uh, their child's, um, combinations would, could not be met because should have written this down, sorry.
No, you're right.
Are you familiar with what I'm trying to, okay, I'll look it up.
Okay, yeah, look it up. So if they have an IEP, it doesn't mean they're a five oh four, and five oh four doesn't mean they're IEP. Those are completely two separate things.
Two separate things, and they cannot have both plans.
Okay, but what about if they have an individual learning plan?
That's, that's IEP is.
IEP.
But what about someone that's a, a middle class student?
Yeah, she's talking about a.
Oh, an I, an individual learning plan.
I L P.
Multi-lingual.
I wrote down, I, I wrote down I L P and they set it backwards. Okay, okay, so they can have an I L P and an I E P.
Correct.
Or a five oh four.
Yeah.
And I L P, I L P could be, they could have another one of those, other two.
Correct.
Also.
Yes, yep.
All these, all these abbreviations.
Acronyms, I'm telling you, that was one of the number one things that blew me away when I first saw it on the board, was like, what?
We're trying to get, breaking them out for you all the time, but it's, there's a lot of it.
Okay, so another question was, when do students, uh, attend their case conferences? So, uh, again, annual case reviews happen at least annually for students that have IEPs. So students are required to be invited, um, to the case conference either when the student turns, uh, becomes fourteen or enters grade nine. Um, that is one of the requirements that we're monitored on, so they at least have to be on the case conference notification invited. Um, if the student doesn't attend, either the student or parent choice, uh, the, we still have to take steps to make sure they have a voice, especially when they hit the fourteen years of age or age nine, because there's a transition portion of the IEP that it needs to be the student voice. Um, it's important to include students, uh, when we feel it's appropriate, because the plan is about them. And adults can sit around the table and come up with a plan for a student, but if they're not on board and don't understand it, then sometimes the plans aren't successful, so. Yeah. Any questions on that? So one of the questions, when we were at the high school, the client, the vocational programming, that was the goldmine that, um, you guys were, got to observe and go in and purchase some things. Somebody said, what are some other community partners that we have that we send kids out to do, you know, job skill type things? And this was the list that Beth Kaiser, our transition coordinator, uh, provided for me. So this is currently where we are sending students. Um, we have connected with Invest Hamilton County, and they have been helpful. And look like just here, the end of September, we've started a placement at Bruberger. Um, so we are always looking for opportunities. Um, I, I was participated in the, uh, Noblesville Diversity Coalition, All Abilities. I was on the panel last week, uh, where we talked about, um, students with disabilities. And there was, uh, somebody there from Connor Prairie, and I went up to him automatically afterwards, introduced myself, have already connected him and Beth Kaiser to see if there would be opportunities to get our kids, uh, to Connor Prairie. So they're connecting, so we're always looking for opportunities for our students.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Mosaic's financials, you guys got to go up to observe Mosaic. So the question was, there was a question about the cost of sending students there. So, um, we came back, I got this information from Steve Warrenhoff, who you guys met that day. That's the director of Hamilton Booth Madison. Um, the budget for Mosaic is approved by the HBM board, which are the superintendents of each of the school districts that are in HBM. Um, and then it, it kind of outlines the cost to send students. So the end of each year, they determine the total number of days. Like we'll get a list from Steve to say, okay, here are your kids, here are the days they attended. So we're confirming, yes, that seems right, to make sure those are the days. They divide that total number of student days into what was spent, actual cost to determine a daily rate, where then billed. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see the Mosaic's expenditures and then the total student days came up with a daily rate of two hundred and forty-three dollars. Any student that attended, our days were one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven days. So you can see our total cost to send students to Mosaic's for last school year.
And are we the, the biggest portion of, are we the biggest portion of the total budget?
I, I don't know.
For H, for.
Yes, I mean, is there.
Mosaic's are for HBM.
For, for Mosaic's.
We probably are, we probably send the most kids just with our size.
With the size compared to.
But I guess I don't know that for sure, because I don't know.
I mean, if you did a, I, I think we would have to know, like, based on our overall student population, like, size, like, are we proportional to, like, other schools? I mean, like, is another school in our HBM who's much smaller than us sending X amount of students, which actually is a larger percentage of their student population?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
I don't know that answer, but.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah.
Any questions on Mosaic's? Uh, another question that came up that day was our Medicaid funding. So we do bill for Medicaid, um, and this is a way to get reimbursed for sub-services we provide. Um, it's just a way to bring in some additional money to help offset costs. We must have parent consent to bill, um, does not impact any Medicaid funds. So a lot of families will not want to provide consent, because if they're receiving Medicaid themselves, then they think that impacts what they're receiving, and it's completely separate. So it does not impact anything the family can receive. Um, we are not allowed to ask families if they're on, if they receive Medicaid billing. So we just, our guideline is, we try to obtain consent for every kid. They have an IEP, we just try to get it on file, um, just so we have it. So if things change or they do receive Medicaid, then we can bill. Um, we currently bill for speech and language services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, ABA services, and transportation. Um, we are getting ready to transition, we currently use Claymade for our billing, and we're getting ready to transition November first to Relay. So our staff, uh, we are, I just sent out an email today for trainings coming up after fall break, um, to get ready for that switch. And I know the question was, like, how, how do we use the money? So some of this is salaries to help with salaries that we have in the district. Uh, we have outside consultants, like we have, uh, two gals we contract with that do all of our IEP professional development, meet with teachers on writing, um, a good IEP, opportunities for students. Somebody had asked, like, how, what money are we using to send kids to Agape that you also got to see? Many times it comes out of the Medicaid funds, and if there's, like, certain supplies or stuff that we need. So it's just an additional pot of money that helps offset costs and provides, um, things for students.
What's, uh, what sort of salaries might be included in this that are paid?
Cause we, well, cause we as a district already include salaries in our budget, right? So is this maybe additional people that we have to bring on?
Yep, okay. Yeah, if there's a, um, student with a specific, uh, medical disability or, um, would need those kind of assistance, so that's where that's going.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought so, but just.
Yep. It's in addition to our normal teacher salaries, right? And so this could be like, for, to offset those additional, um, special education expenditures, because we know that it's not a one for one for when we get those dollars back in.
There was a question about, uh, uh, IDLE monitoring, how we're monitored. So this is all brand new, we just, this is hot off the press. Uh, we just found this out a couple of weeks ago at our state director's, uh, case conference, fall conference. So DOE is moving, moving to a new monitoring cycle. Um, and a lot of, this is coming from guidance they're getting from the federal government. Uh, wanna move from compliance only to compliance and outcomes, from a fixed schedule to flexible risk-informed model. Uh, they want to have a system that's proactively intervening and not just reactive, um, after the results are already done. So they're going to a six-year monitoring cycle, seventy-plus LEAs in each cohort. Uh, they'll rotate annually, we will be in cohort two, which will be next year. So next year will be our monitoring year, um, where they will monitor fourteen indicators, and they look at our percentage for the alternate assessment. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide, here are the, uh, fourteen areas that they monitor. They look at students with IEPs and their graduation rate, they look at the dropout rate, they look at the number of students that, uh, are being assessed on I-Learn, and are they making progress? And what their pass fail rates are, uh, they look at students with IEPs that are being suspended or expelled. They look to see where students are receiving their services, that least restrictive environment, and are they receiving it with their peers, or do we have too many kids being pulled away from their peers? There's a preschool least restrictive environment that they look at, preschool outcomes that they monitor, parent involvement. There's a parent survey that after every student's annual case review, we ask parents to fill it out. And it, they respond to questions about, did they feel they were, they had a voice and they were involved in their child's case conference? That was just held. So they look at parent involvement, they're looking at disproportionality, uh, racial, ethnic groups, um, either an inappropriate identification, just special ed, or specific areas, um, disability categories that they look at, we're monitored, our, our, uh, initial evaluation timelines. We're monitored our initial evaluation timelines. All initial evaluation timelines have to be completed within fifty instructional days. And so we have to ensure that those timelines are met and case conferences are held on time. Secondary transition is indicator thirteen as we know it. That's where I said when the student is in grade nine or fourteen, they have to be invited. That's one of the criteria for secondary transition. Post-school outcomes, they want to know where are kids that either graduated or exited school with an IEP, where they are, like, two, five years out. So they try to be able to contact them to see where they are, and are they doing what they think they were doing? And schools used to be required to do this, and then the DOE took it over, and then we found out a couple weeks ago, this is coming back to the school. So we're going to have to come up with a plan to do.
Because you don't have enough to do.
Yeah.
Right. And some people won't want to tell you.
Correct.
Right? I mean, some might say, you know, yeah.
So what is a preschool outcome?
So a preschool outcome is, we have something called I-Star that all of our preschoolers ages three, four, and five are evaluated on through their teacher of record. And so we have indicators within IStars, kind of like taking iLearn, that, you know, are they meeting those developmental milestones? Are they reaching their goals? And so that has to be done six weeks within entering early childhood, and then six weeks within exiting early childhood, and we also do it at their birth date, so to get a better gauge there. So those are our early childhood outcomes.
But it's not a test that kids take.
Not a test.
It's a rating form that staff fill out.
Yeah.
Prior to this requirement, how much is this adding to your workload?
I don't know yet. I think we were already monitoring quite a few of these things on RDA, results-driven accountability, and we were kind of, a lot of this information will come from the DOE. We were already doing IStar, we were already doing preschool outcomes, it'll just be now part of our IDOE monitoring. So I'll let you know next year, after we go through monitoring, how much more work is there for paperwork-wise? I mean, that's what it's going to boil down to, it's going to be more paperwork and then the post-school outcomes, right? Like, that's going to add to our workload.
I would say just the secondary transition, indicator thirteen, is a huge workload on our secondary teachers, because it's additional sections of the IEP that now become required once they're in ninth grade or hit that age of fourteen. And then there's a rubric, so there's criteria that has to be met in all of those different sections. And so next year, they'll, DOE will randomly poll so many IEPs and review them, and if they're not a hundred percent compliant in those areas, then we have to fix them or come up with a plan. How are we going to ensure that these are a hundred percent compliant the next time our IEPs are polled?
Is that the alternate assessment?
No, that's the secondary transition, the indicator thirteen criteria. The alternate assessment, one percent cap, is schools can only have one percent of their student population assessed on the alternate assessment. And we, since Erin and I have been here, have always been over the one percent. I think currently, the last time, we were one-point-two, so we have gotten it, gotten it lower, closer to that one percent. When Erin and I came, we had students taking the alternate assessment that didn't qualify for the alternate assessment, so we have cleaned that up. So we are pretty confident that the kids that are taking the one, the alternate assessment now meet the criteria. We just have more kids that meet that criteria.
It would be great if IDOE was doing this monitoring to focus on the kids, to see how they can better help them, rather than trying to catch you, you know, doing something wrong or not doing what.
It needs to be student-focused, not provider-focused.
Right.
Yeah.
Wow.
The other question was, we had, what is the number of students that have an IEP also on free and reduced lunch? And this was hot off the press. Michelle Turner, we got this from Michelle Turner, she just got back from a quick little being out of the office. So you can see there, we currently have eighteen-hundred-and-ten students identified, and you can see the breakdown for free, reduced, and paid lunch. Questions on that?
Yep. Will you send these slides?
Yes, we will. Yep, because you asked for them after the last one, and we thought, well, let's use this same one to add our information, and then we'll share it.
Okay.
Yes.
So the eighteen-hundred-and-ten students are special education students.
Right now, identified in our SIS system, which is our student information system, which is Power School, currently right now, it has pulled out our non-public school students, right? So this is just students sitting within ten of our Noblesville School buildings right now.
That have an IEP.
They have an IEP.
Okay.
So the majority of the students are not on free or reduced.
Yeah.
Okay.
How does that relate to other schools in our district or in our county, relatively speaking? I've always wondered.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Again. We could pull that data.
It appears we do a better job at what you guys do.
It's probably fairly consistent, I would guess.
You think it is?
We'd have to pull it to check if I'm right, but my gut would be, there'd be a few percentages up and down, but it's probably pretty similar.
So would you say a higher percentage of our gen ed students are free and reduced than what the percentage of special ed students are?
I didn't poll numbers for our total free and reduced. We only looked at if they are identified.
Sure.
Yes.
I know what our gen ed one is. Well, let's see.
Thirty now.
It would be higher. A higher percentage of special education students are free and reduced than, I'm guessing, the other would be, because our total, this, that percentage right there is about thirty-six percent, and our district number is under thirty for everyone. So without doing, running the full breakout of math, that should mean that gen ed is likely a slightly lower percentage. Am I thinking about that right, dear? I'd have to pull the others and do the rest of the math, but in my brain, that should, that should mean this is a little bit higher.
But not significant, I mean, not.
Right.
It's not a huge discrepancy.
Yeah. Right. I mean, it's not like we're seeing an overwhelmingly large number on free and reduced versus paid. Right? I think that might be a question.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so then another question was about our non-public schools. So we have, I think, I think we shared them on the tour in our slides, but we have Our Lady of Grace, Legacy Christian, Garan Catholic, Premier Soccer Academy, Homeschool, I think those are our babies. And so we are required through Article VII, which again is our state special ed law, to have some kind of involvement. We're required for child find, so if any of those schools feel they have a student that might be eligible for special ed, we're required to at least respond and determine if we're going to assess the child, to determine if they're eligible. We're, it provides a minimal level, a smaller level of services to our non-pubs. We are not required to provide FATE, that Free Appropriate Public Education that we're required for students that attend Noblesville Schools, but we do complete evaluations, and then we have to have yearly consultation meetings with those buildings, which we typically hold in January, February, once we know the budget, because then state and federal dollars are determined from our December one count, and then we have to identify that amount of money that has to be spent then on the non-public schools, the students attending.
Who's doing that? Because that sounds like that's a lot.
So we have a non-public school team. We have a director of non-public schools, Jeff Mann and Paul.
Okay.
And then we currently have two resource teachers and one and a half speech-language pathologists.
Is that our school or is that in the co-op?
That's ours.
We do that, we, Noblesville Schools does.
Yep, those are our staff. That we, we made the determination a couple of years ago when Erin and I came on board, that it was easier or maybe kind of cleaner to spend that money on people than to say, you've got X amount of dollars to buy stuff, because that's what happens a lot. So we use the money to, because they still have to have, they're on service plans, not IEPs, but someone still has to monitor those. So we spend the bulk of our money on non-pubs on the team that we've put together.
And you have to report all that to IDOE, even though you're not actually in the school? Wow.
Yep.
How long have you two been here?
Okay, we figured this out, because we didn't hurt sure. We did.
It'll be six years for me in January.
Yeah, and seven for me.
Okay.
So I'm starting my seventh, you're starting your sixth in January.
But you, but you had other roles within the district before.
Yeah, so I left and came back. Yeah.
And I started my teaching here and then left for many years and got administrative experience in other districts, and then came back here. And so I was hired in January of twenty. So I always said a month and a half.
You perfected it and then came back.
And then I came back.
Yeah.
Same. I started here as a teacher, left, was a resource teacher in another district, was a director for five, and then came back. So I came back in fall of nineteen.
Oh, that was the fun time.
Yep. And then another question was just kind of that, talking about that least restrictive environment, and this is kind of small, but it just is, shows that, that continuum. So see down at the bottom of the top chart is, we want the majority of our kids to be in the general education classroom with support within the general education classroom. So that's an LRE code of fifty. And again, these are all state codes. And then based on the students' needs and the support they need, that could increase. So eventually, you could get to an LRE of fifty-one, where they're still in the gen ed class, but they're pulled out more, maybe for some instruction or different things in a special ed setting. Up to the most restrictive, least restrictive environment code is full-time homebound, and that's because they're around no peers, and that's an LRE code of fifty-seven. The separate-day school facility, which is our Mosaic, is an LRE code of fifty-three. And then if a student is in more special ed than gen ed, that usually gets to an LRE of fifty-two. So you can just kind of see, this is our continuum of services. Questions on any of that, on any of those?
That's a lot. It's a lot.
Well, and it's a lot to just know.
Yeah.
When, when did, you know, beginning of my professional training, we went to the SCADA TAC and Central State treated children that were institutionalized. When, when did we begin to uninstitutionalize children and bring them back into education? This would have been, this would have been in the seventies, right?
So special ed law, Article VII, idea, well, idea started, it was in nineteen-seventy-five.
That makes sense, because in seventy, in the seventies, we would go to the SCADA TAC and treat institutionalized children who we now see in the community.
Yep, so nineteen-seventy-five was when the first idea was brought in.
It took ten years probably to get close to where we are today or more than that.
Yep. Oh, yeah. I mean, just, I mean, because you even think back when I was in school, you know, there was a lot more separation of kids than it is today.
Yes.
And we had Tri-County. Yep, yeah.
In the nineties, maybe?
I don't know when.
Um, let's see, ninety, it would have been two thousands, early two thousands.
I took my hat to you, having lived in this environment for my career, and see what we do, what you do, really what you actually need in special education, it's just a special trip, to see that happen after having, going to the institution setting, which was not nice, and see what was going on there with institutionalized children.
Yeah. So then, some questions were around some of the specialized programming that we saw. And so our applied programming is designed, so those are for students who do have cognitive delays, maybe participating in the alternative assessment, who really need to work on just key components of that program, being communication skills, academic support, transition guidance, practical skill development, and then social skills learning, right? So equipping them with those essential skills across their different areas and really looking at that applied programming. And so previously, you know, we looked at a name change two years ago, and so that was like FAP, Functional Academics Programming, or life skills. And so those are traditionally, what those are still called in other districts, we just felt like that was not a good representation of our students and their potential, was really to change the name for that programming. And so we do have those locations. You saw several classrooms while you were at Hinkle, and then at the high school as well.
The name change is so much better.
We love the name change. So does our, our parents. We do the same thing with pathways. So pathways was formerly known as behavioral self-contained. I don't, if you ask any fifth grader, middle school, or high school, or no one wants to go to a program that's named after your disability, right? And so we really felt like it was important to identify the key components of that program as well, and then to also change the name, because their pathway to earning, these are students who are on high school diploma and can earn high school credits to graduate, is really a very structured and supportive educational environment, where they can be successful to help them across all their different settings, right? We're really focusing on academics and behavior skill development. That looks different a little bit at the elementary. You saw this classroom at the White River, actually, and East is where you saw these two particular programs. And so really generalization, we work a lot at the elementary level, and, you know, as they progress through of their behaviors across context and content areas, practicing positive replacement behaviors, and we really do a lot of that through all of our data-driven planning cycles that we have with, with our staff to support them. And so really, our vision being that we are providing a consistent, organized, and responsive learning environment where students can grow all academically, socially, and emotionally, with equipping them with the tools of confidence, right? So you, we have these classrooms at Hazel Dell, White River, East, and the high school. Additional programming, special education programming, you were able to see some early childhood classrooms or ECE, and try to put those acronyms in there, that jargon for you. We do have those at Hazel Dell, Hinkle, so you saw some classrooms at Hinkle, Promise Road, Stony Creek, and White River, as well as LMP, or Little Millers Preschool, with those community placements at six of our elementary schools. And then, you know, when Amy talked about the continuum of services, that the resource support, that fifty is available at all ten of our schools, and then depending on the area of need of the, of the child and their services that they need, kind of goes up and down on that continuum. Any other specifics about programming? All right, we did have one question, this slide's a little bit smaller, on restraint and seclusion. We do have a board policy at C-400, it's coming from Indiana Code 20204013. And so we have our statement then within our handbook, and then definitions within special education procedures on what is a seclusion and what is a physical restraint. So seclusion is the confinement of a student alone in a room or area, which the student physically is prevented from leaving. So it does not include the supervision of a timeout, a scheduled break, which an adult is continuously present in the room. A physical restraint is, both of these are used as a last resort. So I think that that's really important to recognize, that. So I think that that's really important to recognize that unless there is harm to self or harm to others, we are not engaging in seclusion or restraint. Physical restraint is a contact between a school employee and the student unwillingly participates, and that involves the use of a manual hold to restrict the freedom of movement. So we can have a physical transport and a physical escort. A physical escort is not considered a physical restraint. So if it's like, I've kind of my hands behind you, I'm leading you, kind of getting you out of the classroom or moving you to another location, but if I have to physically restrain you, that's a physical restraint. So then from there, those, we have our own seclusion restraint, but this does come from the DOE's website, Commission on Seclusion and Restraint Law, that then we have to have our own board policies and then our own procedures. So once a seclusion or restraint takes place, then our procedures are that they have to contact their building administrator and describe the events. We have a seclusion restraint log. The notice of seclusion restraint and report goes home to the parent within twenty-four hours, as well as debriefing with the rest of the team within twenty-four hours of the incident. And we are also notified within twenty-four hours, as well as our behavior specialists. So we're a pretty solid streamlined plan moving forward on seclusion restraint. I will say our data, as we have taken seclusion restraint data, and we look at this over the last five years, I think it is a celebration for last school year. You can see our numbers were trending up in the areas of restraints and seclusions and totals. And so what did that look like? We do have four behavior specialists for the district, in which they are reviewing that data and information that comes to them directly. So they were looking at trends as well. From looking at those trends, we knew that we needed to go in and do some additional training with our staff. Some CPI, we have crisis prevention intervention, is what we are using for our seclusion restraint protocols. And so then we go in and do some little debriefs with the team. Maybe it was on a particular student or a particular building, going in and doing some additional training with that particular staff and/or building. Through all of that, and then just education, right? Making sure that anyone who's working with students with special needs are trained with seclusion restraint and making sure that we are using de-escalation strategies first before any seclusion restraint. So you can see those numbers did decrease. One other question was on child find obligation. So this comes exactly from Article VII. And it basically summarizes that it is our responsibility to identify students age three to no less than twenty-two who may be in need of special education. So we have many processes within our school buildings to identify students, but that comes right from Article VII. Any questions on child find?
We've been able to identify actually what students are homeless. I know I've talked to the trustee's office, and that, that's kind of a tough number to always nail down. Do you have any idea right now?
So we don't have, that runs through student services. So student services is really looking at those McKenney-Bento or the homeless students, right? And so they do have good tracking of all that information, but we could ask Julie Backer.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question that came up was regarding dyslexia. So dyslexia is not one of the thirteen eligibility categories that we look at for special education. Dyslexia falls under a specific learning disability, so SLD. When we look at the assessment of that, that means that our school psychs complete the CTOP typically, it's a comprehensive test of phonological processing, in which they are looking at phonological awareness, phonological memory, and rapid naming. So those are all going to be deficits that we'll see in dyslexia. We also have our mandated dyslexia screeners that we use, those for benchmarks as well. So, but as far as dyslexia being one of the thirteen eligibility categories, it is not. It does fall under a specific learning disability in the area of reading.
So would that get them a 504 if they have dyslexia? Or what, how do they get help if it's not actually identified as one?
Yeah, so, so if dyslexia is not a thirteen eligibility category, but specific learning disability in the area of reading is, we're going to do all of our school psych evaluation, right? And so if we have concerns about their reading or reading deficits and they're not making appropriate gains, our team may refer them for special education, or they may have outside testing that was done that the parent brings in, right? And so we're going to use our school team, our school psych, to do a full evaluation and determine eligibility in special education. And so once there, it's determined their eligibility within special education, it might be specific learning disability in the area of reading. It will not be specific learning disability for dyslexia, right? But what areas of reading are affecting their ability to progress as their gen ed peers? And so that's really what special, special education is looking at. And so while dyslexia isn't a category, it does fall under a specific learning disability in which we provide services and supports.
Dyslexia is more of a medical term than educational term. So we have students that have the medical diagnosis of dyslexia on an IEP, but it's under a specific learning disability.
Which is odd, because it does have an educational impact.
Yeah, it just falls under a specific learning disability. Yeah. Okay, we think we covered the questions that you guys had that day.
We're experts now.
Yeah.
Nailed it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's amazing what you guys do. I mean, yeah, there's so much to it. It's a lot.
Agreed.
Yeah. Any bad questions?
I'm just thankful you two were in that.
Right, right.
Because you guys do phenomenal work.
Yep.
Thanks.
And we, and we have, we have the reputation of, of you guys, because you do such an amazing job with those students.
And then you said you'll send, you'll share.
I've already got the email ready to go.
Perfect.
I'll check a couple of things and I'll send it before I leave today.
Okay.
With all the slides from today.
Correct.
David sent me the budget book, he was referencing, so I'll, you know, one email with all a bunch of fun stuff to read.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else? Okay, public comment is next on, next on the agenda. Seeing none.
We've all commented.
They've all commented. Yes.